We'll turn it over to Ewan and then to Terry. We've talked before to you all about the process this year for the budget. I think in June, we mentioned we'd be back in August to give you kind of a progress report. There are two main things we want to chat with you about tonight. Ewan will start by giving you a progress report on our discussions we've had based on the direction you gave us to continue to investigate and pursue the idea of a BNO tax implementation in January of 2016. So we'll give you an update on that and where we are. And then you all wanted to have a discussion earlier in the year about capital projects. And so staff has done a great job of categorizing those and preparing those to give you an idea of what would be out there. We don't yet have a recommendation on prioritization because we don't know how much money we'll have to allocate, but we'll be able to give you a pretty good idea of what projects would likely be out there. And we're interested really in your feedback. Is there anything we've left off or left out or anything you want us to prepare to present to you when we come back later in September as we begin to get more heavily into the budget?
Just before we start, since you brought that up, I did have a discussion with the mayor and Jay and Terry about this. And basically, what I would like to get tonight, and as we get into the capital improvement, is not a priority of the programs that are there because they put dollars in as placeholders depending if we get the money. So it'll be fluctuated as we get to the end. So what I would like to end up with at the end of the day is that maintaining what we have has been the council's priority over the years. I would like to reaffirm that as a direction that this council still wants to go because that will drive what projects are in this and get a head start. Then also along with that, the discussion was with the mayor that they will not, the administration will not bring any programs forward, projects, new projects forward without first coming to the council to say, is this where you want to go? And I think that's a good plan. And then thirdly on that is that if any council member really feels that we should be drilling in on a project, then bring it to the whole council and we can make, the council as a whole can send the message that we also think it's important enough to ask the administration to take a hard look at it and see how it fits in. The problem with setting up just a strict priority, we're going to do one, two, three, four in each of, is the dollars that we receive come sometimes from different grants and they offer an opportunity that we hadn't anticipated. Or if, like, there's money coming in for trails, so we can only spend for trails. So therefore, well, somebody could, like me, could think the trails aren't really important, but when you got a million dollars coming in that you can only spend on trails, then you have to say that becomes a priority because you want to use the money for what it was intended for and you don't want to lose it. So there's a lot of these little intricacies in this plan that will drive us to move something from the bottom to the top mid-year or sooner or later. But the council has to, the administration has promised that they will come to us first and we can discuss it and have that discussion necessary to say, yeah, this is a good thing and we want to go for it. So with that, that's where I hope to get at the end of tonight so that we can, then administration will go forth with that marching order. And it makes it a lot easier when we get ready to do the final passage of the budget and this plan, then we know what we've already agreed to. So if that's okay with everybody, we'll continue along those lines.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we will jump right into the first topic of tonight. That is a status update for BNO tax. As Jay mentioned earlier, we're just trying to give council a quick update in terms of where we have been and where we are right now. And we are not going to ask any decisions tonight and will continue to do our outreach to the business community. Just a little bit background, back in February this year, during council retreat, staff presented information to council about the city's budget situation. And at that time, council authorized staff to consider revenue options for 2015 and 16th budget. And the two operating revenue options identified are BNO tax and regional fire authority. And we also discussed capital options and there's some willingness or want to consider future voter-approved capital funds. And then subsequently, in April 7th, at committee of the whole meeting, council authorized staff to continue to pursue fire authority, fire benefit charge option and potentially seek voter approval during as soon as 2015 and also continue to investigate a BNO tax option. Recognize that the city will most likely need both revenue source by 2020 in order to meet service demands. Also, the capital package just mentioned earlier will be for future consideration. And lastly, council agreed that for 2015, 16 budget planning purpose, we can assume that we have new resources available for 2016, that we can use one-time resource to bridge any gap in 2015. So we'll present a balanced budget. And lastly, in June, we come back to council again and we again get a little bit more refining the direction by council direct staff to develop BNO tax legislation and to consider to have the legislation effect in January 1, 2016. And again, affirm that we can use one-time money for 2015 budget. And specifically, council wanted to work with stakeholders to develop a BNO tax structure and implementation details and bring them back for council consideration during the summer. And we are still continuing to explore regional fire authority as well. So tonight, we're really following up in the third bullet that we are coming back to council in terms of where we are right now. And as we present to council in June, that there are a number of considerations when we are looking at BNO taxes as a revenue tool. One of the biggest concern for everyone is impact on small business and as well as how Renton will be still competitive with other jurisdictions if we implement this tax. Because the tax is pretty complex and so we want to make sure it is as simple as possible for both businesses to understand as well administratively can be done easily. So we don't need to spend a whole lot of the tax generated in just answering the tax. So those are some of the thoughts. And also in June, we put on the table a potential hypothetical tiered tax structure. I have to say that since then, we were advised that that is not possible because the state law prohibits us to tax within the same category of activity, tax the business differently just because of size of the business operation. And so we went from there to review our surrounding jurisdictions, tax codes. And so here are some of the key comparisons. We compared Bellevue, Everett, Kent, Seattle, and Tacoma, really the largest cities in the Puget Sound area, and how they implement their tax and what they tax and so forth. So as shown here, Bellevue currently generates about $27 million a year from BNO tax and they have a threshold at $155,000 per year. So if your grocery receipts exceed $155,000 for the year, then you will need to report BNO tax. They also have a square footage tax, I didn't go into that, but really the BNO tax has $155,000 threshold. And they have a uniform rate, which is 1.496%. And there's an interesting side note of this, both of their threshold as well as their tax rates are adjusted annually. The threshold is adjusted annually by inflation. So if 2% or 3%, they will adjust that by that. And the tax rate, they also adjust annually. And partially, it's because the state law since 2004 restricts how much you can adjust your tax rate and it only allows you increase your tax rate by 2% per year. So rather than have one-time big adjustment, they decided to just adjust progressively in small increment. They are unique in that aspect. I don't see any other cities has that built in into codes. And City of Everett, very similar demographics as Renton, they are generating $18 million from their BNO tax. They have the minimum threshold, reporting threshold, that's $20,000 per year and that's why state law, that's the minimum you have to allow. So people make less than $20,000, will not be burdened to report BNO tax. And similar to Bellevue, they have a uniform rate, 0.1% for all categories. They do have a small temporary progressive rate or really a lower rate for very large amount. They set that at $7 billion. And so for manufacturing industry, if you have more than $7 billion in grocery receipts currently, that additional amount is taxed by 0.025%. And that more favorable rate for the higher amount will sunset in 2023, so, end of 2023. So starting 2024, all 100% of manufacturing activity will be taxed at 0.1%. City of Kent, as you know, they just implemented this in 2013 and they do have at current time, the highest deductible, which is $250,000 per year. They do have two different rates for two categories. Basically, they group manufacturing, retail, printing, and processing for hire as a group has a lower rate for that group and all the rest of the activity are taxed at 0.152%. I failed to mention earlier that the state law maximum allowed tax rate is 0.2%. That's without voter's approval. Seattle is generating $180 million from BNO tax and they have a relatively small threshold, low threshold at $50,000 per year. And they have varied rate, as you can see, their service industry paying 0.415 and that is voter-approved because again, it's double, more than double the current 0.2 rate allowed by the state. And then they have a very more agricultural-oriented category, basic is for buying wheat, oats, and processing them actually, both in converting them into flowers, are taxed at very small rate, lowest rate, which is 1/10 of their normal rate for the other industries. So again, most of their tax is because of voter-approved previously, so they see 0.2%. Tacoma, another large municipalities, is actually generating about $26 million from their BNO tax. All this information are actually from 2012, so 2014 may be a little better now. And their reporting threshold again is just state's minimum, the $20,000 per year. And again, they have varied tax rate structure as well and they also providing a favorable rate for the agriculture products. Then, you know, they have an international investment company, actually have the highest rate, no, actually service has the highest rate. But anyway, they do vary their rate by category and that is allowed. You could decide to tax different kind of activity at different rate. But as I mentioned earlier, a lot of businesses actually engage in more than one kind of activities. So they frequently will report multiple and then they will need to apply different rates and then their credits and deductions and so forth apply, so making it more complex that way. So based on that comparison, the preliminary thought, again, I want to emphasize preliminary because those are just thoughts we put on table and we shared with the business community so far. We initially put on the table that we want to have a very high threshold, as high as $5 million a year on grocery receipts and all the way up to $5 billion in any grocery receipts. So really, business will start reporting when they have more than $5 billion, then the taxable income will stop at $5 billion.
Ewan, excuse me. So even if I'm a $5 billion company, I wouldn't have, with this, would I have to, I wouldn't pay-
More than $5 million.
Wouldn't pay on the first $5 million or just everything over the $5 million? So any business that makes over $5 million would have to start paying at the $5 million level?
No, no, no. Actually, once you meet the threshold, 100% of your grocery receipts will be-
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
That's a very good question. And initially, we're thinking of 0.1% uniform tax rate for all activities to minimize the confusion and complex calculations. And we also discussed that we want to allow a new business tax credit, which will be for large business who has more than 50 employees. Then they can receive up to $1,000 per employee tax credit during the first three years, which is allow them to have time to establish their new business in Renton. And again, the credit will be limited to how much their BNO tax liability is. So we'll not be refunding them, but they can take credit for the tax owed. Initially, we thought that we should exempt all government activities as well as nonprofits. Basically, that's what our current practice with our current business license. And we, because the high threshold, we are considering that for business with grocery receipts for under the $5 million, they will continue their, report their business license fee just as they currently do. And we probably will then adjust the per-employee rate by inflation so we don't have one significant jump one year. With that thought in the back of mind, we do some calculation.
Excuse me, I just want to verify that I understand this right, that the businesses that end up paying BNO will not pay our current business license and head tax?
Correct.
So they would be exempt from that?
Well, only the people who don't meet the threshold then will continue to pay.
Right, okay.
So that's how we are thinking. And here, I just, based on those assumptions, this is the number it would look like. And we don't have perfect information, so this information, the numbers are definitely based on some true information we can see plus some estimation and projection. And so we played with different thresholds, reporting thresholds, and see how many businesses will be impacted. And we're only looking at business has location within Renton for this purpose. The dollar amount is for everyone, but the number of the business impacted is only local business. And the reason is we want to do some outreach if that's the case. And again, it's not perfect information, but we believe we'll have only about 75 or so business per will meet the $5 million grocery receipt threshold annually. If we lower that to 2.5 million, we probably will look at about 125 or so business. And if we lower it further down to 1.5 million, we probably look at 250 business. So those are, again, is estimated and we will definitely continue to refine our estimation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Ewan, what is the mix of the varied types of businesses in terms of when we look at the previous chart, the other cities, varied rates? They were varied depending on the types of businesses. What do we look like in that regard would be my first question? And then the next one would be, do we know why those other jurisdictions came up with a varied rate methodology? What is the reasoning behind that?
So here's my belief, but I have not fully confirmed that with them. As you may know, historically, the state's sales tax system were exempting service industry. And so a lot of cities put on a higher rate on service industry because of that. But since the last few state law changes, a lot of service industry are now subject to sales tax as well. So that reason no longer exists in my mind. So they are already paying other taxes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that. What do we look like in terms of our mix of businesses, service versus manufacturing? What do we look like?
Who will?
Our mix of businesses.
I do have the numbers, but I don't think I have it with me here.
It's okay, if you don't have it, you can-
But I can provide that to you, yeah.
Yeah, it's a mixture of businesses being impacted.
Yes.
Obviously, large manufacturing businesses, Car, Boeing would sort of be impacted because. Auto dealers also likely meet even the $5 million threshold. And that's, you'll likely hear from them, they have very, you know, high cost, relatively low volume. And so it's a concern that in some senses, they're sort of a mid-sized business, but they fall in the same threshold as larger businesses. There are other businesses that are, there's larger retail businesses like an IKEA or McLendons or potentially Fred Meyer, other businesses likely could meet that threshold too. So it's a mix of businesses that would meet likely all three of those thresholds.
Okay, so my other question is, when we were gathering this information and studying the other jurisdictions, did we enter into any conversations about, get any feedback about when they implemented their BNO taxes? Were there any types of lessons learned in terms of economic development, you know, impacts that affected their jurisdictions, their cities?
So other than Kent, just implemented a couple of years ago, most of the cities had their BNO tax in place for a long time. And we cannot see specific negative results on business going there. So, but truly, of course, I think when new business want to find new locations, they will consider everything, a lot of majors when they pick the location where they want to locate the business. So definitely tax impact is one, but there are also other elements they will need to consider.
So have we, in our analysis process, have we done any investigating on studies that have been done nationally, regionally on jurisdictions that have implemented a BNO tax?
This is, this is a universally disliked tax. This is one of the worst taxes. There's two states that have this tax. It is a bad tax. Unfortunately, it is the bad tax that we're saddling with. And you can talk of this as a grocery receipts tax, a first-dollar tax, it's not an income tax, you don't get to deduct. You can do a little bit in terms of trying to adjust rates to maybe provide some incentive, but it's constantly keep having with the business representative, chamber representatives. They all understand and get much slightly more comfortable with some of the feedback. They don't, they would love if we could find something that helps the implement of this BNO tax. But they also understand that there's not another option really for us to generate the kind of revenue that we need. The question we asked you all was, do you do a combination of reducing services and other social revenue increases? The feeling earlier from part of the council was, we have a level of services we want to try to maintain. We asked the same question to the business community. Their sense was, they feel pretty good about the services they get from us, managing the tax dollars that we receive fairly well. So that comment, and then I think the other is, is this is a complicated tax. Even one of the assumptions we had going in was, could we simplify at least the local implementation? And while I think we could do that, the state allocation is so complicated. I'm not sure that we give them a lot of relief by having a simplified local tax. And partly because some businesses are operating in a number of jurisdictions, including Renton. So while we could have simplified tax from Renton, they're still, they're in Puget, they're in Bellevue, they're up there and elsewhere, and they're having to always do the license from to the jurisdictions anyway. So that's one of the things that we're continuing to have discussions with the chamber to try to see if there's a path that is the path of, that's the least, worst way to implement this tax.
And Jay, as a former chair for the Chamber of Commerce, I'm aware of the BNO tax being, you know, highly disregarded or not favored by the chamber. My questions however, are inspired with a view that I'm hoping that we can take a look at, as we have this conversation, that we could take a look at some of the impacts that some of the other jurisdictions, you know, have had and avoid as much as possible as we continue to try to believe that this might be something that we could do. I just want to make sure that we vet it with all of the information that's available to us.
Actually, we are in those discussions with the business community right now.
But I'm speaking of research as well. I'm thinking about, you know, outside of our jurisdiction, there should be some research material out there that can tell us maybe some things that maybe these other jurisdictions can't tell us.
I will do some search and see if I can find any actual documentation on that. So as I mentioned earlier, we initially looked at $5 million reporting threshold at 0.1% of tax rate and basically would generate nearly $6 million, which is what we are estimating at this time. But we're now wed to that because as Jay mentioned earlier, we started discussing our proposal, preliminary proposal with business community and we have met with chamber's board and their large business members and so forth. And here are lists of things we have heard from them. They do believe that the city is managing our resource fairly responsibly and that there is a need for additional resource to sustain our service level as well as capital investments. But they did also suggest that the $5 million threshold is way too high and is fairly burdening few large business. And so they would like to see we can lower the threshold so allow this tax burden be distributed more fairly. They also want us to consider adding other revenue options. So not just one tax, but maybe multiple revenue options, then maybe we can lower the BNO tax. And also, they suggest that we should not have a blanket nonprofit exemption because there are some business, some large nonprofits, they really operate like business. Example is Providence Health, Group Health, they really provide large medical services and not no longer just like small human service nonprofit organization.
Marcy?
So the way that you have it set up right now, would Providence and Group Health be exempted?
Currently, they are exempt from paying our business license fee.
Because they say they're nonprofit?
They're nonprofit.
Wow.
So that's also a realization-
Are there others?
-by chamber as well.
Because I was trying to think of who this would be.
Valley Medical?
Valley?
So-
Valley Medical?
They're public?
Valley Medical is a government- Valley Medical is a government hospital.
Oh, yes, it's District One.
So we may not be able to do that. But that's one piece that we will want to work with tax attorney to see what exactly we could and couldn't do. But if we look at business license information, 20% to 25% of our local employment are in governmental and nonprofit organizations. And so it's a big chunk of our local economy. They do contribute, you know, sales tax, for example, they do, their activity is subject to sales tax, and they do have activity subject to state BNO tax. And so how broadly or how narrowly we want to refine, define them can impact then the rest of the business community. So that's one area that we will want to, at least a recommendation as we look into that and don't make it so broad, the blanket exemption.
Would you say one other feedback that?
One of the feedback that we've received from a couple of businesses at least, and I believe with the chamber as well, is, you know, we talked about a cap on the overall collection, at least trying to, trying to work that through so that, certainly for large businesses, there'd be some idea of an upper end. And I, I think what businesses appreciate is that we are, we are trying to plug a hole basically, and not create some huge windfall for the city. And they appreciate that, although it's, we're not sure exactly what the, the dollar amount will be until, until we really probably implement the tax, you know, but, but at least we have a target and we would adjust that. So that's something I think we, they do appreciate that we're trying to do that, that this isn't, we're saying five, but we're hoping for 11.
So another piece of information we received recently is we just concluded our budget advisory committee meetings, and currently, we don't have their final reports yet, but the draft report has been prepared. But we did hear from them that all the comments are very consistent, their comments are really consistent with the business community. They want us to look at broadening the tax base and, you know, even ask residents to pay a portion of their tax. But I will want to say one thing that as part of the council direction earlier is we still are considering Regional Fire Authority, that will have impact on residents. And as we go out for future capital lobbies, that will have impact on residents as well. So anyway, we want to make sure we balance all those long-term considerations as well. So that's where we have done. And again, we are in the midst of getting more impact, input from, from business community. We have two meetings scheduled this Wednesday, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And we also have one-on-one calls or our connections with the local business as well, and just to make sure they understand what we're trying to do. And we are going to consider all the inputs when we draft the final legislation. And the legislation will be delivered to council, you know, I think we'll probably have interim discussions as well. But the deadline for council receiving that will be October 6th, when we present our budget, proposed budget to the council. And we do, as always, whenever we have budget-related legislation, they are subject to public hearing. And at this time, we're looking at probably October 20th for public hearing, and, and then the adoption, we hope, is by November 3rd. So that's kind of the steps we will need to go through before it finally become law of the city. So there's lots of discussions that will happen. And again, we're not asking for decision tonight.
Mr. Chair? Okay, so the reason that I'm really interested in deeper analysis is because I just get a number of things that just pop into my mind. And one of the things that I think about, number one, that when we look at, you know, if we do the $5 million threshold tier, that is going to impact 75 businesses. What impact would that have on our residents in terms of cost of goods? You know, I know for some it wouldn't, I mean, if you don't buy planes or, you know, buy, you know, trucks and those kind of things, but what impacts? And I ask that, I raise that question because, you know, with proper analysis, we could learn whether or not in creating that kind of, 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 of impact on a certain number of businesses could cost our residents in a different way. And I'd like to know a little bit more about that, which leads to another conversation about balance, you know, balancing this kind of thing, which would mean some participation from our residents. And then, of course, the question comes up, you know, do people really understand, you know, well, what the case is all about, you know, for being able to generate the kind of revenue to maintain the level of services that we say we want to, we want to deliver to our residents? So I'm interested in, in information that can help us to better understand all of that. And then I'm also interested in knowing that the outreach process that we're going to have is going to be robust enough. It really helps to bring our community, you know, both our residents and some business owners to a place of understanding, you know, what this means and what kinds of sacrifices could be potentially brought before them.
Yes, I will follow up with that information request. And just on the top of my head, as you know, many jurisdictions already have BNO tax, and did that impact the price that the dealership put on their car? I'm not sure. And again, that is what drives the consumption. So anyway, that's just anecdotally how that is working. But I would definitely to see if I can find anything.
It'd be good to know that kind of thing.
Location decisions on BNO tax.
Yeah, I'd like, if you could share that information with me, I would, I'd be interested in knowing more about it.
The other question?
Go ahead.
Okay, before we move into that, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and we'll be right back.